Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners' monthly meeting at this time at 6:00 PM, the posted time of the day's meeting. At this time, I'll call it a meeting in order, Madam Clerk, we have a form.
Yes, sir, we have a form.
Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Wayne King, who's going to give today's invocation and lead us on the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Wayne. Next, we'll recognize any elected officials who are present. Next, we'll recognize any veterans.
Okay, we got, we got.
Ma'am.
Okay, get that one. I've got some hands.
There's one in the back, just one in the back.
Thank you, I thought you were standing up back there with those guys. Okay, we've got a county pen, it's a county press with rocker profession. If you don't have one, come up to the front hall.
Thank you all, thank you for your service. Next, I'd like to recognize any law enforcement present. And next, I'd like to recognize any county department heads. Is that everybody? All right, thank you, guys. First order of business tonight is to approve the proposed agenda. Without, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move the special presentation below public comment.
A second for that. Any discussion here in all, if there will say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries down. As with that, then the next item will be public comment, Madam Clerk.
The public comment portion of a board of commissioners' meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. This and speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium in front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or person attacks against any person. All comments from the speakers shall be issue-oriented and directly related to a subject that the commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allotted to them to another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
Bill, thank you all for being here, thank you for the ones that signed up to speak in public comments, it's important to hear your feedback. We have quite a few who would like to speak tonight. With that, at first, I'll recognize Mr. Bob Hoover.
Grandbabies. So, I was in a union, I was in Steel Mill for forty-three years, I was in a union for twenty-three years, and I was the finance director of the union. So, I understand numbers. So, my question's to you, I know you're not going to answer me, but I hope that someone calls me, okay? My phone number is seven oh four.
I have his phone number, Board.
So, I'm going to ask the questions, and I know you can't answer me, so I wish that's the way it was at union meetings, because that stops a lot of stuff, so I understand why you do it. But my concern is, is I know that every four years, that everything gets appraised, okay, by state law. It's every year, eight years by state law, but every four, and I appreciate it that you do it every four, so there isn't that big jump in increase. But you have to understand, there's a lot of people, fixed income, I'm retired, I'm seventy-two years old, and I'm on a fixed income. In my neighborhood, in Oak Springs, the state, there's five widowers that live in that development. I haven't talked to them, but I don't know how they're going to pay any increases. I know you don't have control over the appraisals, but I do know you have control over how much you, percentage you take out of that appraisal. So, I'm asking you, if you would not consider giving, watching the widowers and stuff, I'm watching, and I know you, I know you have one percentage for here and one percentage for here, and I don't know that you can break that out by age, okay? But I know a lot of people are complaining, and I don't see a whole lot of people here saying anything, okay? This is the last time you'll see me, all right? It won't be the last time if I don't get a phone call. But what you do is important, and I appreciate it, and I understand numbers. I would like someone to tell me what your budget was last year and whether you met it or not, and if you were behind, how much you were behind. Before you go and, and, and figure out what you're going to, how much you're going to take and charge people for the percentage for their homes, I don't know, I don't know the proper name, I don't, it's, but anyway, I would like to see your budget for next year, and are you going to make that decision after your budget is figured out and what you're going to do with it? I hope that you do, I would like to see the numbers, I would like to see the budgets for my own, for my own well-being, okay? Like I said, I understand numbers. I've passed many federal audits in that union hall. Am I done?
Yeah, but if you've got a thought in mind, go ahead, I'll let you finish.
Please, please, before you go and make that, that, that decision, make sure you got your numbers right. Please take into consideration the elderly people in this community and the widers in this community, okay? Thank you.
Have a blessed day. Next is Mr. Lee Green.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. My thing that I want to talk about tonight is taxes and the issues with the landfill and trash dump sites. I'm on a fixed income. I've been disabled since two thousand eighteen, when I was hurt on the job. My dad gave me a trailer before he passed away, and it is a twelve-foot trailer, but it's a double-axle trailer. The limitations on the landfill, from what I understand, you can't load down a trailer anyway, so I don't understand what the difference between a double and a single-axle trailer would be as far as size. And I would like for you to reconsider that. Also, about the sites, I feel like we're being double taxed, because we pay taxes on our landfill dumping anyway, and then for us to have to take it to the landfill and go across the scales and pay it again, to me, is being double taxed. Some of the stuff that they won't let you put in a dumpster at the convenience sites, when you go to the landfill, you had to put it in a dumpster anyway. They may not have to make the trip across town, but you still have to put it in a dumpster. A lot of people don't have trailers or vehicles that they can take to the trash dump. I don't know if any of you've ever actually been in the landfill, but it's not a smooth and comfortable ride down in there. It's dusty, muddy, bumpy, you know, there's all kind of debris. A lot of these family cars and stuff is not suitable to drive down in the landfill. I also worry about the safety and convenience for people in the landfill with a congestion. You've got trash trucks and dumpster trucks, the roll-off trucks, and quite a few other large vehicles, a lot of these smaller vehicles, and you get the numbers of the vehicles coming in because the convenience sites are not letting you dump. I think it's going to make a large congestion area in the trash dump itself, and it's going to pose a safety thing, because some of these smaller vehicles are hard to see with a truck. I drove a tractor-trailer, and I drove the fifty-ton tow trucks, and there's blind spots, it don't matter what you do and how many mirrors you put on. So, I'm concerned about the congestion and the safety there. And I'm also concerned about the roadside litter, because a lot of people's not going to take the, I mean, if they're turned away at the landfill, at the trash dump sites, at the convenience sites, a lot of people's not going to take it to the trash dump, they're just not, it's going to go on the side of the road. I think their roads are going to be, become more littered up, and then that's going to pose a bigger problem with taxpayers' money later on. Thank you.
Mr. Green, what was your address?
Five zero six Christopher Road.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Billy Scruggs.
Billy Scruggs, one oh eight White Rock Road, Grover, North Carolina, no stoplights. I've got several things I'd like to talk about, but I know the timeline's going to get me. First of all, it's about the taxes. Brother-in-law lives right in Grover. Ninety-four years old, lives by herself. House was built in sixty-six, sixty-seven. Life appraisal was one oh three. This year, two fifteen. Tell me there's not something wrong. I know y'all don't have a left evaluation of property. You do handle the percentage, what goes on with each tax, you're charged with that. You don't bring that down, you'll see me back, and you'll probably see a lot of other people back, their taxes are raised a lot. Mine went up sixty percent. She lives close to that casino that which y'all brought in here. That's probably the reason why our taxes went, I mean, the value went up, because of the casino. I also have a copy here, March the third, twenty-five. Nine hundred people has not paid their taxes so far for year twenty-four. This is March the third, will come out in the newspaper end of March. I've got one of them here, along with y'all, have not paid their taxes. Y'all are supposed to be leaders of Cleveland County. Y'all have not paid your taxes, none of y'all have paid your taxes. Person, person knows who it is. Talk about it's trash. I was employed with the Bible, Seventh East High Corner for thirty-five years. I was the environmental coordinator. Know a lot about trash, that solid waste, unharrous waste, heaven, all anything considered trash, I was one that. Back in Brack, he worked for the Cleveland County landfill, him and his boss, he was there to have any complaints. Now, my understanding is, if you take a little two, two to three pieces of wood, you can't throw it in the dumpster. Crazy. Got to make the trip all the way back to the landfill, when you get over there, you're going to have to pay for it, when you're already paying for the dumpsters carrying it over there. I don't, I don't know who made that. But anyway, something about dogs. Daughter's neighbor's dog come and tore up a package that was delivered, her dog tore that, dogs running loose. Told her, called the dog catcher, she said, well, I'm not used to calling dog catcher. All I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Mark Herndon.
Hello, I'm Mark Herndon, I live at five fourteen Bethlehem Road in Kings Mountain. I am here today to express my support of my neighbor Tammy Freeman, Vice President of Clifford's Army Rescue, also known as CARE, based here in Shelby. This organization rescues abused, neglected, and abandoned animals from kill shelters, owner surrender, and general abandonment. Tammy and her family live next door to an old farmhouse that had been in my family for two hundred years. My father was born and raised in this house that Tammy lives in, and spent decades tending to the land surrounding this home and raising livestock, including cows, donkeys, hens, roosters, pigs, and so forth. For those of you who know, for those of you who grew up in the country, you know that this livelihood extremely rewarding and naturally noisy at times. Shortly before my dad passed away, he proudly sold his, this home and some of his land to Tammy and her family. He knew the good that Tammy was doing to help these animals. Not many people are willing to put themselves out there to volunteer for animals that they see as a nuisance. Unfortunately, many people who choose to keep pets also choose to not spay or neuter them, nor provide the care they need. Tammy rescues these animals out of the goodness of her heart to a healthier life, healthier live out their days with her new adopted family. Unfortunately, over the last several months, there have been complaints made toward Tammy's efforts of rescuing dogs and cats from local kill shelters and rehabilitating them in her own home to successfully provide these animals to new, loving, and healthy homes. I can tell you, as Tammy's neighbor, I live closer to her than anybody around, and these dogs do not affect our life in the country. Instead, every time we hear a dog bark, we know it's because they are playing with one another, or, or, or being well taken care of by Tammy, and are one step closer to become any healthy, healthy enough to be adopted into a loving family. Four years ago, my wife and I personally, personally adopted a four-year-old kitten from Tammy. Before we brought her home, Tammy had already spayed her and made sure she was up to date on all vaccines. Our cat has been a wonderful addition to our family, thanks to Tammy's efforts. I respectfully request that the county commission recognize and understand the dedication and goodness that Tammy serves these animals. To put it frankly, if Tammy's efforts are put to an end, hundreds, hundreds of animals will die. For those who are concerned about the potential noise these dogs produce at this one household, you are encouraged to become a volunteer of CARE to truly understand the important mission of saving lives and finding them safe in loving communities. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have Ms. Barb Ward.
I'm Barbara Ward. Can you hear me? I'm Barbara Ward, and I live at twenty-one oh three Windermere Lane in Shelby. I'm here to support Deb Harden and Clifford's Army Rescue. When my husband Terry and I moved to Shelby in two thousand, I read some disturbing reports on the number of dogs and cats that were being euthanized every year in Cleveland County. The number of animals being routinely euthanized was shocking, to say the least. There didn't seem to be any laws in place to protect them, no spay-neuter laws, and very little interest in stepping in to stop the neglect and abuse. Back then, the county was euthanizing about ninety percent of all the animals that were picked up, dropped off, or abandoned by their owners. Then I heard about the good work that Deb Harden and CARE volunteers were doing to help the animals in the community. They were working in conjunction back then with other rescue organizations in the southeast and northeast. By working together, they were able to rescue thousands of dogs that would otherwise have been euthanized or left to suffer and die on the streets. This is what happens when people work together. But the animal neglect and abuse continues today. More and more animals are being dumped on the streets to fend for themselves, and there are more and more cases of horrific abuse and neglect. I adopted one example of this kind of neglect and abuse. Otto, a little Shih Tzu cross, was found wandering around in Cleveland County. He'd been dumped out and left to fend for himself, horribly matted, and completely blind due to neglect and abuse by his previous owner. Deb and CARE stepped in, and Otto got the medical attention he needed, including removal of badly infected, non-functioning eyes. And now he's living with, living the good life with me. He's clean, groomed, well-fed, and he gets around just fine in my home. He's a very well-adjusted little blind dog, and everyone loves him. Otto is just one example of all the happy endings made possible by Deb Harden and CARE. If not for CARE, Otto would have been just another dog scheduled to be euthanized. Deb is a county commissioner with a special interest in animal welfare. One of Deb's jobs as county commissioner is to hear complaints about animal cruelty, animal neglect, and other issues directly related to animal welfare. When she's made aware of an issue, her job is to confirm the validity of the complaint and follow up with a report. She routinely reported the complaints and issues to the director of the animal shelter back then. After filing the same complaints over and over again to the same people, the issues were not addressed, the problems continued. The next step was to file the complaints with the county manager. She did not overstep or overreach her authority. She simply did her job and followed the next step to have the complaints addressed, which ultimately was filing the complaints with the county manager. I'm almost finished. It takes courage to do, to do the right thing, even though you'll face backlash from some disgruntled people. Every day, Deb is bombarded with phone calls from people in the community asking for help. So many dogs are in need, and we are a small group of people doing the best we can. We're moving forward with our plans to build a facility that will house many homeless animals. It will take time for our vision to become a reality, but in the meantime, we ask for your patience, understanding, and your help. Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. Ward, I'm assuming this is Terry, Mr. Terry Ward. Well, I was going to say, I get an air down between Tony and Terry, so.
I've been called Ward.
I thought your name was Terry, so.
It's all good. Terry Ward, twenty-one oh three Windermere Lane. Guys, here we are again. We all know why CARE is here at Clifford's, so I won't go into that. I believe Deb Harden is instrumental in the reversal of, of a bad problem we had in this county, you know, our, the, when she first started working on this, it was, you know, catch them and kill them. And, and she stepped on a lot of toes and made a lot of people mad that needed to be made mad. Sometimes, if the, if the honey doesn't work, you know, you go with the stick, so, but she, she wasn't worried about stepping on toes, or the, the people that were ingrained that were entrenched in, in this broken system, and pretty much single-handedly got it, it's a much better place than it was when she first started getting involved in this, so I commend her for that. I know there are people saying that she's overreaching with her position as a commissioner, as a, as a voting member of Cleveland County, I strongly disagree with that, and I, and I, and I hope you don't let those people influence the decision of what you know you need to do. And I'd like to suggest that we don't go back to the bad old days of that, and can we maybe think outside the box? What would you guys think of a, a public-private nonprofit partnership? You know, this county has a two-million-dollar-a-year budget for animal control, animal welfare, and when you look at the, when you do the math and you look at the number of, of animals that are being taken care of with that kind of money, it, it's just an insane amount of money spent per animal. So, I was thinking, you know, if we're looking at the highest and best use of taxpayer money, would that not be a great way to do it? You know, as a nonprofit, she's bound, the, the organization is bound to be very transparent about the money that comes in, the money that goes out, where, where it's used, what it's used for, what happens with that, and that would be nice to see that same transparency applied to the, to the animal control part, where, you know, what is going with that money, and what ways could we do it? We, as a volunteer organization, you know, a hundred cents of every dollar is going to the CARE and, and adoption of the animals, and the proponent, you know, advocating for spay and neuter, so I guess we've, we've addressed the, the results of not CARE as opposed to trying to get to the root of the problem. So, I'm hoping that, that we can move forward with that, and that you guys won't have to see my ugly mug again, so thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have Ms. Tammy Freeman.
Tammy Freeman, the infamous five-one-six Bethlehem Road. I don't have the nice notes that Barb had, but I want to address, you know, first of all, you know, I do have some absolutely fantastic neighbors. You know, I do want to address the complaints about the dogs and the noise. You know, I have eighteen acres where I live, and it was never, you know, my, I do not want the dogs to bark, it is not my intention to have the dogs bark. I don't, I try to keep them quiet, I do, do take steps to keep them quiet and happy, they're happy, they're vetted, they're spayed, they're neutered, they're completely taken care of. We are in the process of working with the state, and lately, it's been almost daily that I'm in talk with the state on working on getting our shelter license, so that we can be a legal shelter. We are working directly, like I said, with the state on that, and there's a lot of steps in that, a ton of steps, a lot of Ts to be crossed, a lot of Is to be dotted, I'm on my fourth coat of sealer on my concrete, you know, things like that, to get this, our shelter license. You know, one thing I do want to address is, like, I was at the vet the other day, and I overheard a gentleman say, you know, he had a very pregnant dog with him, and he said, "I have twenty-eight breeding dogs, twenty-eight breeding dogs, and four litters on the ground," you know? And he was proud, and he was proud about how much money he was making, and he was proud about saying he was breeding this one here that he had with them, he had bred the son to her. to her, because he wanted all his lines to be in, and all his lines, all the puppies to be his lines. So it was, the mother hadn't been bred by the son, and he's breeding these dogs, and we don't have any, you know, and yet, we, or CARE, is being attacked for having rescue dogs, and having, trying to do the best we can on rescuing the number of dogs that we try to rescue and care for them, and we're being attacked for it. And yet, there's breeders out there like this that nobody touches, nobody looks at, nobody has any, you know, problem with that. Maybe they do, but there's, I think we need an ordinance, a spay-neuter ordinance, or some type of an ordinance, to stop these backyard breeders from breeding more and more and more dogs. You know, that's kind of what I want to talk about, is instead of attacking the rescue, who's trying to stop all this madness and trying to help the public and help the community and help all the dogs that we can, I think we should try and stop the breeders who are creating these problems, the backyard breeders, et cetera. That's it, sorry.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mr. Stuart Sloan.
Stuart Sloan, 1920 New Prospect Church Road, Shelby. I'm here representing not only Dean Gardner, but several other local landowners that are impacted by Cleveland County's position regarding the Brook Cliff Solar Project. My wife and I moved to Cleveland County in 2020, but my wife's family has been here for over a hundred years as civic and business leaders in the Shelby community. I made the choice to move to Cleveland County and reside at the old Joshua Beam House, one of the oldest homes in Cleveland County circa 1841, as is noted on the county seal. Local leaders in the area assembled at the Joshua Beam House to discuss, draft, and deliver a request to the North Carolina Legislature for the establishment of Cleveland County with land contributed from Rutherford and Lincoln Counties. We've always believed this was a place where good ideas and opportunity could help people prosper, so we were surprised when we learned the county had a civil lawsuit against the solar project approved for our land and that of our neighbors, and we'd want to know why that is. The Brook Cliff Solar Project is a good thing for our family and our historic home and adjacent parcels. The project would deliver a passive, quiet, odorless use for the land that won't bother any of our neighbors, and for the most part, will be unseen from public roads. Alternative income-generating uses for the property are not nearly as passive as the Brook Cliff Solar Project. We live on the land, so no one will be more affected by the project than we are, allowing this project to move forward in a way for nonhistoric portions of the property to help sustain the land and the historic and natural areas in and around the Joshua Beam homestead. We're proud owners and custodians of such historic and important piece of Cleveland County's history, and we want to sustain and care for this land and property for generations to come. We love it here, but the property and home are expensive to maintain. We think it's worth the time and resources required to keep this place up for ourselves and our children and our county. Income from this project will provide us the means to do so. This project would bring tax money to the county without costing anything in return. It benefits everyone, us, the county, and the community. I struggle to understand why the county wants to fight this project in court, and it doesn't make sense that, because no one will give me a reason as to why the county is so against the project. Please let the project move forward. It's the right thing to do for all of us. I thank you for your consideration of this request and our historic property, and I would offer, please check with council to find out why the resistance to move forward. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Mark Davis. I reside at 504 West Warren Street, Apartment A1 in Shelby, North Carolina. I'm here to speak with my concerns and to acknowledge and to give my support to CARE. I am a proud dog mom of a four-and-a-half-year-old dog that I adopted from CARE. The dog was given to me when I went to pick it up at Tammy's house. The dog was handed to me in immaculate condition. She'd been vetted, she'd been vaccinated, she was well-fed, and I can't say thank you enough. Now, when I was out there, and now this was four years ago, but I was there, and they had a round pen, they had people there playing with those dogs. There was no noise at those dogs, other than an occasional bark. I did notice the barn area where other dogs that had not been acclimated to this, and they all looked healthy, well-fed, and I do know from their policies that they were neutered and vetted at this time. And when I was here a couple, last month, there was a gentleman talking and played a recording of dogs barking. Now, I'd like to tell you that, living on West Warren Street, I hear a lot of noise, but over, a few streets over in West Shelby, I hear dogs barking every night, you know, and so I went over, and I pulled off the side of the road, not far from Tammy's, and I listened. I went back, I didn't hear anything. I heard maybe one or two dogs bark, very woof-woof, and that was it. And then, so I went back on another trip. I did not hear dogs barking such as what that man had recorded. And so today, I have a friend that lives up the road from Tammy's home, and I said, "Roxy, I said, I want to know something. Do you ever hear dogs barking?" "No, no, not unless there's a coyote or something bothering those dogs." And I said, "Well, I just want to find out." I said, "Some people were saying that these dogs bark and disturb the neighborhood." And I thought, "These dogs are not barking any more than the dogs in the city are barking." And so I would like for y'all to consider and to support CARE, and I want to thank CARE for my fur baby. And she's now a four-and-a-half-year-old, ten pounds of mischief, but she was given to me in such immaculate condition, and they come to my home, they inspected my home, they verified that I had the means to take care of this dog. And if that was being done all over the county, we wouldn't have all these dogs running loose and being injured. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steve Paget. Steve, how you doing?
My name's Steve Paget. I'm director of the Small Business Center at Cleveland Community College. My address at home is 105 Monteith Lane, Shelby. My office address is 1800 East Marion Street, better known as the Legrand Center. And I'm here just to say thank you to the commissioners for your support of small business over the years. I'd really appreciate your support. I'll be ten years in this position in a couple of months, and I just wanted you to know all ten years I felt your support for the small businesses in this community, and I appreciate it. I do thank you for the referrals you send to me. I do get them, and I help them any way I can, but I still got to complain to you because you're still in second place. Betsy Harnage at the Register of Deeds has got you beat on referrals, but that's okay, just keep them coming, you can catch up with her later. But thank you for your referrals. Also, remind you that a year ago, I opened a satellite office in Kings Mountain. So I had the office, main office here in Shelby, and another office in Kings Mountain, and it's going very well. I'm down there about once a week, and sometimes, depending on appointments and depending on what's asked of me, I'll go more frequently. I've been asked to open a second office up in Bowling Springs, and I've been talking with the county manager, the county, excuse me, excuse me, David. I've been talking with the town manager, and he's offered me a conference room there at no charge, and says, "If you'll come over here once a week, we'll give you a place." So I'm hoping to have another satellite office over there on the western side of the county. Now, we got the east and the west, and I'm in the middle. So hopefully, we're going to be able to generate some more small businesses, and I appreciate your support for all of them. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, I have Ms. Donna Wallace.
Good evening. I'm speaking for my husband, too, William and Donna Wallace, and we are also involved in the Brook Cliff Solar Project. And hopefully, I cannot get emotional. It's like going to the principal's office up here, not knowing what you did that was bad. It's kind of scary. And we've been in front of a lot of the folks through this whole thing. And it was actually before Christmas, the, I mean, it was, first the county approved it, then they approved it, then they approved it, then they decided they weren't going to approve it, and then they weren't going to approve it. So we spoke to this one, and we spoke to that one, and finally, we went to court over it, and the judge approved it again, but no go. The county says, "No, we're going to appeal it some more." I don't understand. Solar is good for our environment. I have eight grandchildren in this county, two sons who make a good living, and they work in this county. I worked for Cleveland County Schools for a lot of years. Solar is a reliable, cost-efficient energy saver. It's also, will make the county money, because the federal and the state will give tax credits to you guys if you, all these solar projects that are going on in this county are beneficial, not just to me and my family, but generations to come. Our technology has advanced so far over the years, we're playing catch-up right now. Our global warming is going to be a real important thing, and the solar energy is going to contribute to all these things that are outgrowing us that we're not keeping up with. I want my children, I want to, I may not live to see it get used in the way it will get used eventually, but I want my children and my grandchildren and their children to have good, clean energy, energy that's stored up so that if something happens, we've got something to have a backup for. There's things coming that we can't see, and I can only hope that those things are going through your mind and that we don't have to keep fighting over this. Brook Cliff, Duke Power, and I don't know how many more people have got lots and lots of money already invested in this project, and to stop it now is, it would just be a shame. It's just really heartbreaking. I've prayed over this, I've cried over this, and I've wanted to say a lot of bad words over this. It's just something that I think you guys should consider, and let us go on with this thing. It's been a battle for the last several years. It's important that we have these things in our community, in our county. And thank Briar Cliff for sticking with it, and thank you very much for listening to us tonight.
Ms. Wallace, what was your address?
We have the property. Do you want the property where we live? By the way, we relocated to get out of their way so they could get in there, because our property was the entrance to that project over there. So we relocated and moved so that we could get out of their way, they could continue on with their project, and boy, that really didn't go anywhere.
Which address would you like to go?
Okay, which one do you want? The 120 Spurling Road where the project's at, or do you want where we live now?
Where you live, please.
Okay, it's 340 Eckor Road, Abesmer City, North Carolina.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mike Hudson, I live at 125 Persimmon Creek Road in Kings Mountain, Gold Run Development. And I'm pretty simple, it goes all the way down to number six. We just want to know why there was a rezoning sign stuck in my front yard about the Kings Mountain, we legalized it, and how the Cleveland County will affect our processes and et cetera. So I guess this is really for Mr. Martin.
If you hang on to Mr. Martin's presentation, I think that'll be good.
That's what I figured.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a special presentation. At this time, I'll recognize Ms. Tiffany Hanson for the National Public Health Week 2025.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Commissioner and fellow commissioners. Thank you for having me. It's a beautiful night out. I really want to start by saying, National Public Health Week really gives us an intentional way to focus on community education around public health and awareness, but really gives me an opportunity to kind of dote on our staff at the Health Department and offer some accolades for the good work that they do, and do some things really just to promote them in our department. And I really just want to say to you all, thank you for your ongoing support, your continued awareness and intentionality around the health and wellness of the community. It really is very meaningful, and it does not go unnoticed. So thank you.
Hold on one second, I think we have a proclamation.
Yes, sir. National Public Health Week 2025. Whereas, the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, is National Public Health Week with the theme of "It Starts Here," highlighting the importance of public health activities and making a difference in homes and communities in our state. And whereas, this year is the 30th anniversary of celebrating National Public Health Week, and in the past thirty years, significant strides have been made in public health, including a decrease in the use of tobacco products, a reduction in childhood mortality rate due to vaccines, better healthcare and nutrition, and the ability to respond to pandemics and outbreaks of infectious diseases. And whereas, the Cleveland County Health Department has established its mission to improve and promote the health of Cleveland County through education, service, and prevention through the work of the highly skilled public health workforce in Cleveland County. And whereas, the Cleveland County Health Department is dedicated to ensuring that Cleveland County is a community where good health is within the reach of everyone, using clinical, preventative, and educational programs and services to meet the needs of Cleveland County residents. And whereas, the County Health Department uses the 2023 Community Health Assessment to catalyze strategic planning, create enhanced community engagement opportunities, and allocate resources towards evidence-based interventions with maximum impact on promoting the quality of life in the county. And whereas, a person's health status can differ by zip code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community context, access to healthy food, access to education, and access to healthcare. And whereas, public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, from infectious disease outbreaks to natural disaster preparedness. And whereas, efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury can transform a healthy system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners for Cleveland County do hereby unanimously proclaim that April 7th through the 13th, 2025 shall be designated as National Public Health Week in Cleveland County, and call upon the people of Cleveland County to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to recognize the contribution of public health and improving the health of the people in our county, and supporting residents to adopt positive preventative lifestyle choices, as the week's theme states, "It Starts Here," adopted on the 18th day of March 2025.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you guys do. Very important, your work, and we appreciate that. Anybody, any other comments?
Chair, may I make one comment on the public health?
Let's finish this, and then I'll let you make those.
Thanks, sir.
Do you have anything here, Tom?
Thank you, Tiffany.
Mr. Merrick.
My comment is very short. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone that's here. My comment is very short. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone that's here tonight. Uh, we appreciate your concern and your taking your time to come here. And uh, we learn from you guys, and I hope you learn a little from us. But it shows that you care and uh, we, we appreciate whether you were a speaker tonight or whether you just came here to sit and listen. We appreciate you very much and thank you for your support of Cleveland County.
Anyone else? All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Madam Clerk. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So the board's been presented, members of the board, you've been presented your consent agenda. Uh, previously, you had a chance to review this in your packet. Uh, at this time, entertainer motion to approve or deny the consent agenda.
I think most would approve it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh, anyone opposed? All right, next is uh, now we're to the public hearings. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by saying their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker.
All right, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is a small business incentive grant for SRI 3 LLC, which is also doing businesses broader uh, campground. This time, I recognize Sherri Lavater.
Good evening. I'm bringing before you a small business incentive grant request. Um, this is the second grant year. Um, it was previously approved for um, this business to get the uh, 2023 uh, grant year. Um, this uh, I'm bringing before you tonight is the second grant year for 2024. Um, they've met all the uh, criteria for um, the grant. Um, they had an additional um, investment of just over $1 million. Um, so they're eligible for that maximum amount um, of 50% of the taxes paid. Um, that amount is $2,850. And this is gonna be a public hearing for, to hear for that.
Uh, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from the board? Right here, none of this time, we'll open the public hearing. No one signed up, right?
No, sir.
See, mark these out, okay?
Yes.
So no one has signed up for the public hearing. So with that, uh, we'll now close the public hearing. Next is back to the board for any questions that you might have, Sherri.
I don't have any questions, just to maybe for the purpose of if you want to explain that, man, how it works.
Okay. Um, the way the grant works is um, they have to show that um, they have a qualifying net new investment of between 50, $50,000 and $1 million. And they would be eligible for a grant of equal to 50% of the taxes paid on the new taxable investment. Um, and that can be done for three years, three grant years.
They don't really get the money. We just give them the taxes that they get, right?
They have to pay their taxes and then we, then we give them a grant on the back end for um, the investment. So they do pay those taxes. Um, but this is a grant to give them part of that back as an incentive for investing in Cleveland County.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. Um, I'm have several family members that, that go there fairly often. It's a, a, a very, very good place for people to go and spend some time on the river and stuff. And I, I think they're uh, uh, do a very good job uh, with recreation and uh, camping and everything in the county. And I, I appreciate all they do. And uh, if it's appropriate time, I'd make a motion that we approve.
Uh, so yes, we'll entertain that. So that's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimous. Next item, thank you Sherri. Next item is planning case, planning apartment case 25 dash zero two. This is zoning district of future land use. Plan map designations, there's 239 parcels. Uh, that uh, was, has been relinquished by the city of Kings Mountain through their ETJ. And it's before us to extend county zoning, so these parcels do not become unzoned. So with that, I'll recognize Chris Martin, County Planning, uh, Director to discuss this and answering questions that the board has. We do have to have a public hearing and Mr. Uh, Hudson, I think this will answer your question.
We didn't see somebody sign up for public hearing. We did not, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, board. Um, I'm here before you tonight to uh, present to you for your consideration zoning districts and land use plan designations for uh, properties surrounding Kings Mountain. And as the chairman stated, this involves 239 properties. Um, these properties were relinquished by the city of Kings Mountain in January of 20, January 24th, 2025, two months ago. Um, and it was relinquished due to a house bill um, from last summer, House Bill 909. And uh, we're following North Carolina General Statute uh, 160D dash 202 that describes a process when, when parcels are relinquished from a town to a county. Um, and part of that process is that we've gotta apply our zoning districts within 60 days of that relinquishment date. So January 24th is when they were relinquished. Um, so for tonight's hearing and tonight's decision, we would be complying with that uh, requirement under General Statute. So what does this mean? Um, it basically means that these 239 properties will um, move or transition from the city of Kings Mountain's services, their planning and inspection services to the county's planning and inspection services. So we would provide planning and development services, um, subdivision administration, building inspections, and code enforcement to these properties, rather than the city of Kings Mountain providing those. Um, another uh, item, I think that may answer the question earlier is how would it affect these property owners is, is basically that when they wanna build something or develop their property in a way, rather than working with the city, they'll now work with the county for those projects. Um, to, to do this, we've got two things we've gotta do. We've gotta apply our, our land use designations and we've gotta apply zoning districts. For the first part with the land use designations, um, we're proposing a map for your consideration. And we basically have used the same method that we've used for the previous uh, parts of this relinquishment. We, you see two colors on the screen. You see primary growth and you see secondary growth represented by the orange and green colors. Um, I think it's important to note that land use plans are not a policy. They're basically, they're, they're, first of all, they're required by General Statute, but they're to serve as a vision for a town or a county when, when adopting zoning districts. And, and the, the, again, the statutes require that we have this prior to adoption of districts. And so with our plan, we're, what we're proposing here is these two designations. Um, the orange being primary growth where we see future intense growth and more active growth in these areas. And the green will be the secondary growth. And we expect more residential style growth in these areas with strategically placed business areas. Um, so for the second part is your zoning map. This is where, this is the map that would apply the zoning districts to these properties that have been relinquished. And this map, I think, serves two purposes. Um, it shows us those properties, the 239 properties, and you can see they're grouped um, in really several neighborhoods. Um, Gold Run, Wright Road, Walnut Acres, uh, down, all the way, moving down towards um, White Plains and Bethlehem Estates. And then you've got some properties near Alex DeOwens Drive and the State Park. Um, this map also shows us the colors or the zoning districts that we're using to apply to these neighborhoods and these parcels. What I've done is broken this down into four separate maps to, to zoom in to these areas. Um, but before I show you those, I wanted to share with you kinda the, the strategy that we used when applying these districts. Um, and it's the same strategy that we've used with the previous two parts to this project. Um, we basically tried to get to know the properties. Um, we, we've ridden the, ridden the neighborhoods, ridden the roads, we've posted signs um, on properties to, to advertise for these meetings. Um, and, and tried to determine character of these neighborhoods. Um, and really thought big picture and not necessarily zone in on individual properties, but really look at neighborhoods and areas. So for the four maps, um, to, to zoom in to these areas, um, you'll, you'll see what we've done, just broken it down into four maps. Um, and we tried to show those four neighborhoods and four areas. Um, this, this map shows you Gold Run. You'll see basically one color being applied, and that's yellow, representing the restricted residential. That's our most restrictive zoning district that only allows site-built homes or modular homes. Um, that was chosen for these types of neighborhoods because um, the way that they have been developed uh, in the past with those, that type of development, the site-built homes and modular style homes. The second map uh, moves along Wright Road. It shows you uh, uh, several parcels. Um, and really what, you know, one I'll point out is the remaining parcels of Walnut Acres, a small subdivision off Wright Road. Um, this map or this district would also be restricted residential, matching the use of those properties. And then you'll see the white color representing um, several of these properties. And that white represents the regular residential zoning district that allows most all types of housing. Um, moving along Bethlehem Road, you'll see both the yellow, the restricted, and the white. Um, this, this yellow is a White Plains neighborhood. It's, so it's the um, neighborhood that uh, uh, was relinquished in pieces by the city of Kings Mountain. And then you'll see uh, Bethlehem Estates as well. I mean, then the last map shows you the, the rem- the remaining parcels um, along Alex DeOwens, both green and yellow. And then the parcels around the State Park that are pink in color. Um, the green, the reason that's different is, if you recall, we had one property owner at your last meeting that requested her property be the rural ag, the green color. So this is her other parcel that's adjacent to that track that she spoke about at your last meeting. So we basically were matching her request for her property. And then the pink is the rural residential, which staff felt matched um, the, the State Park property. It's a more um, it's a, it's a zoning district meant for your most rural areas that has scenic views. So we felt that that matched the State Park and those large tracks surrounding that. We've um, um, met General Statute as far as advertisement notices go. Uh, we've mailed notices to the property owners and the adjoining property owners of all the subject properties. We've uh, we've made maps available and we have some available out in the uh, the hallway outside of the room. Um, we've posted signs throughout the area and hit all the various neighborhoods and we've put, placed the legal ads in the paper. And we've also created a website um, that's, that's linked on the county's homepage. And we also put the website on the letter that we mailed out to all the property owners so that they could access that site to, to really get to know those parcels that, that are involved here. We've uh, presented this item to the planning board and they've reviewed the proposed land use map and the proposed zoning district map, and they recommend approval. And for tonight, you'll hold a public hearing and uh, your, your options will be to approve, deny, or approve with any modifications the board sees fit.
Thank you, Chris.
I can answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions? Chris, if not, could you take a minute and explain uh, how you went about applying the zoning districts? And that they're closely as related as possible to Kings Mountain?
I did. That was one of the, the uh, factors that we considered. We really, we, we basically determined or identified what the existing districts were that Kings Mountain had placed on much of those properties. And then we, you know, obviously our districts aren't the same as theirs. So we tried to pick districts that matched the character of the neighborhoods and was uh, uh, similar to the district that Kings Mountain applied. And I think the overall goal was really to make it where property owners and neighborhoods didn't feel a big difference in, in how they were being treated from a permitting standpoint.
Sir, do you have a question?
So there's a, there's a with the yellow line stop, right? There's a cul-de-sac on the back. Those properties that are inside Gold Run, those not linked as well.
All the white ones are already included. It's already in the county.
Yeah, thi- this project was several parts and those properties were previously relinquished by the city of Kings Mountain. So we've, we've already went through this property for half of that neighborhood. And I think that's a good point. I'll mention that with this third um, um, phase here, one of the goals we're achieving is bringing all the neighborhoods into one jurisdiction. So all the neighborhoods will, will basically be, have the same zoning district and be treated the same as far as development standards go.
Yeah, that, that was the goal of all these subdivisions is they would be in one, they would be the same.
And then my next question is we actually now, whose voting district are we gonna be moving into? Because that's it, or I would live in Gold Run. I can never really vote for anybody.
No change in voting district.
Yeah, no change.
That is correct, yes. Top half was already um, zoned as restricted residential. So what you're seeing tonight will match that neighborhood. It'll match the zoning district for that neighborhood.
Uh, is there members for the board? I'm, I saw.
Kinda like there, he's got a question.
I saw him. So any questions for the board first? Uh, sir, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm one mile west of Gold Run, I'm at 406 Gold Run Road, and I am the same as Gold Run. I'm about a mile and a half toward Shelby on Gold Run Road.
So was he ever in the zoning until Kings Mountain?
So I'm asking him, I'm like, am I considering the same as Gold Run and getting, getting top?
Are, are you in Gold Run? Uh, I, I would have to.
He can look it up. Well, what road do you live near? What road intersects? What's the next road closest to that? Oh yeah, I saw this one.
Right here. This part. Yes, those.
We can look those up for you.
Yeah, we can look those up. Those parcels are, that we're, that we're highlighting here are, would be matched as, as uh, the same as Gold Run.
Oh, that's right there. Yeah, so he would be. He's gonna be on that right side.
Okay. And, and on the other side of the road that's gray, that gray color represents the properties that will remain in the city of Kings Mountain's zoning district.
He can look it up for you, sir, before you leave. Is there any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, if not, we'll declare the public hearing open. This will be very short. No one signed up to speak, so um, public hearing is now closed and it's back to the board for any comments or questions.
Thank, just to come, I, I think it's good. They kept working to get these developments all in one group. Before, they were split, you know, White Plains, Gold Run, half of the control of the city, half for the county. And I know where he lives, and I'm not sure. He, he doesn't live in Gold Run. And he's across the road there. And he's across the road there from Susan.
All that on the right should be in the county.
I think, yeah, all the whites in the county, but Chris will get with you where you can pinpoint where you're at after the meeting. But I'd like to thank Chris and his group for the hard work they put in in trying to get this thing treated out, because it's been a mess, hasn't it?
Hopefully this will put it to bed. Hopefully there won't be any more. Any other questions or comments? All right, so there's not, before us, we can either approve and deny, or make modifications.
Make a motion that we approve of this.
Is there a second to that?
Second that.
Any other questions or discussion? While you're here, none of the people will say aye. Anyone opposed? My motion carries. I'd reiterate, thank you, Chris, you and your staff, thanks to the city of Kings Mountain for working with us and City Council to get this resolved after the bill changed, and I think this will conclude that. So next, we're through the regular agenda, and it's an honor tonight to recognize Mr. Reverend Francis Weber's gonna come forward and make a short presentation on the Washington Outreach Ministry.
Want to say good evening. Thank you. I'm Francis Weber, the Executive Director of Washington Outreach Ministry. Thank you all for inviting us here so we can share what we do in the community. We are a true nonprofit grassroots type of 1C3 entity. We are an emergency food pantry that was established back about 30 years ago. Had a very small beginning. We started in the basement of a church in a 12-by-12 room, moved into 1,100 square foot small building. Now we're at almost 11,000 square feet with our capacity expansion. The impact that we have in Cleveland County is huge. We are the largest emergency food pantry in Cleveland County. We are a hub for Second Harvest Food Bank. We have replicated food pantries all over Cleveland County strategically in food insecure areas. We work in marginalized communities because some of the communities of the county just stay the same, they've never changed. When you look at the information, the data, poverty level, and food insecurity in Cleveland County, I think we've been watching it for about 10 years. We've done some work with the Health Department, working with their assessment team. I think we have made a very impact of all of Cleveland County in reducing the numbers. The numbers are not where they should be, but I would assure you that the reduction that you might see in your book that just came out has something to do with what Washington Outreach has done all over Cleveland County in food insecurity. We feed about 15,000 people a month. We have people that come and sit in the parking lot in the afternoons to get a box of food the next morning. They will sit there all night. We serve through our drive-through distribution, 200 to 300 cars that come through. We also are doing healthcare. We are in partnership with Atrian Health, Healthy Together Cleveland. They were given some funding by Duke Endowment to come into Cleveland County to try to change the healthcare ranking. Healthcare ranking in Cleveland County is the 83rd worst county out of 100 counties. So what we've done, we started a healthcare program. Washington Outreach started what we call a DMAC program. It's diabetes education, maintenance, and control. We started that program five years ago. We were able to count a partnership with Healthy Together Cleveland, Atrian Health, and the Health Department. We're actually going into communities doing healthcare training because the marginalized communities and the low-income communities, nobody ever hits those communities. So we're really serious about changing the numbers. If we're serious about going in the right direction, those folks can't come to us because of all the barriers. So what we're doing, we're going to them. So right now, we're on the south part of Cleveland County doing our healthcare diabetes class. This week is the last week of an eight-week class. We'll take a short break. And we're going into Kingstown. We're going into all the small areas that are really considered marginalized, that have a lot of barriers. Food insecurity, healthcare insecurity, transportation insecurity. We're all over Cleveland County. So what I want you to know is the fact that we have 30 years, and a lot of our volunteers are here tonight that actually make this thing happen. We are serious about making a better Cleveland County. And we are able to get in probably communities that some people may not be able to get into because of the reputation we have for 30 years of feeding hunger, the hunger population of Cleveland County. If you think it's not real, come and join us during one of our food distribution and watch the lines, watch the people. Things continue to increase, and we have not ran out of food yet, and that is a good thing. We supply most of the food to all of the food, small food pantries in Cleveland County. The fact that we're located on 2007 Capernium Road in Cherryville, we do have a dock. All the trucks from Second Harvest come into us, and we sometimes get up to 10 trucks a week. We are a real small business, is what we really are, but we do great things. And we cannot do it without the support of you guys. We thank you for your support. We do fundraisers, we do grants. Everything that we provide for the community is free. And so to be able to continue to provide the service, to change the numbers of Cleveland County as a whole, we need county support, we need everybody's support. I encourage you, those of you that have not been out to see what we do, it is very amazing. There is nobody in Cleveland County that's not replicated what we do. We also have a homeless initiative. We work with the HUD population to try to find homes for people and get them into the system. When people get vouchers, if they're not in the system and they're homeless, they do not get any assistance. So when we found out that that problem exists in Cleveland County, and we've got, I don't know if you're familiar with the CLC, Continual Care, they had nobody actually doing the homeless information system, putting these people in the system. And I'm thinking, if the people are not in the system, how do they get help? And a lot of people that were helping now, they're sometimes double husbands and wives that are working with the inflation, they can't afford to pay their rent and pay the car and buy the food. So it's not just people that are not trying to help themselves. You always have that element of people that's not doing anything, but these are people that are actually trying to make it, but cannot make it because they don't have the right income. We have a summer program. We're getting ready for a summer program now. The education of our children is very critical now. I don't know if you watched the grades that came out the other day. It really kind of concerned us. And we have a summer program. We keep the kids all summer. We make sure those kids are fed, two meals a day and a snack. We have them from 7:30 in the mornings to 4 o'clock in the afternoon. In the summertime, 60% of our children face hunger. And they face hunger is because sometimes they're unattended, they don't get the meals. Kids in our community, we're gonna make sure that they have meals. So we're expanding our resources. We're adding on 2,500 square foot so to make sure that we don't run out of food for Cleveland County. One thing I want you to know is when Helene hit, Washington Outreach Ministry was the only food pantry in Cleveland County that had power. Now, you ask me how that happened, I cannot tell you, but everything around us did not have power. So all the agencies of Cleveland County, the people that lost food for a whole month, they came to Washington Outreach Ministry. We were able to replenish, to provide foods. We have showers, so they were able to take showers. We provided meals when they came to get a box of food. They can take a shower, they can get meals, and they can get a box of food. So what we do in Cleveland County is very impactful. We work real hard. We started out with a $20 gift card when we started this ministry. And now we're in a million-dollar building sponsored by USDA. So we have to work hard to make sure we pay that $21,000 a year mortgage. We do. And doing fundraisers, my fundraiser queen is here. They're all fundraiser queen. We do. We get out and we get into the communities, and we say, this is what we do. Will y'all please help us? It is very important, and it's very impactful what we do. We're on the map now, and I think people are beginning to recognize that, hey, we didn't know that place was there. But you need to come see it to experience exactly what we do for the community. And we thank you for your support. More is coming. Thank you very much.
Do you have anybody on your team you'd like to introduce?
Yes.
Y'all stand up.
This is only just part of the team. This is not all of the team. This is part of the volunteers that relentlessly work hours. They come every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, sometimes every day. And we're doing training whenever there's free training in Cleveland County that the Health Department has given, because we network with them really well. We're at those trainings, trying to make sure we get better. We're working on a sustainability program for the next five years to make sure that we have the money to continue what we're doing because it's so valuable and so important for Cleveland County. Anybody have any questions? Can we get a picture in front of y'all?
We can get a picture. Before we do that, does anybody on the board have any comments or questions?
I just want to applaud you for all you do. I went to one of your fundraisers a few years back.
You sure did.
At parade of tables type thing. It was amazing to see what all you do. And then I recently found out, I didn't know this at the time, but one of the churches that we are at a lot, they do the food bank, and they mentioned that it starts with you. So we are very fortunate to have you and your group in our county.
Well, thank you all so much. All right.
I spent several hours with you a while back, and I was amazed at all you do. And I too applaud you and realize how important the work you do is. We have a lot of generational poverty in this county.
We do.
And, you know, it starts with food.
It does.
And we really appreciate all you do.
And the healthcare too, issues start with food insecurity.
Thank you for you and your volunteers for what you do.
Thank you.
I've been by there, and when the cars are lined up, it's hard to even get up down the road.
That's the little.
Yeah, go out there Friday.
And I appreciate all y'all do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you and to all your volunteers. Very, very impressed. I've heard a lot about it already. Looking forward to visiting you very soon.
Well, thank you. I'd like to say they are a great team. They are the backbone. They really make it happen. They make Washington Outreach Ministry look good, and we're looking good in the county.
Thank y'all again. Yeah, how would you like to do the picture? Y'all want to come up front? All right, we have one more item tonight, which is a closed session. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3 to consult with the attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. Public body may consider giving instructions to the attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim, judicial action, mediation, arbitration, or administrative proceeding. With that, enter a motion to enter closed session. Is there a second? All the people say aye. Anyone opposed? The board's now in closed session. I'll remind the board of that, and we'll reconvene in the conference. The board is now back in open session. During the closed session, the board consulted with the county's attorney and took no action. With that, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, remind everyone that Clinton County Board of Commissioners